Call the meeting to order any items from the public.
Need a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. President, if I may, there is one revision to the agenda. Your 205 order for review and equalization applicant hearing, the Poland family and Limited Partnership, has withdrawn its application, so they will not be here today. We heard from Mr. Poland this morning.
If there's no other modifications or changes, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion been made, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Hess, you have any bad news, good news, or no news for us today?
All three. Good afternoon. Alan says we got at last minute that the other's not coming in, Mr. Poland not coming in. So the only thing we have is John has one change wants to make.
Okay.
And present it to you. Other than that, we could take care of all the calls and it's all we have.
Okay.
Let him do that and other than that, we're good to go.
All right, thank you, Larry. Mr. Street, how you doing? You might want to back that podium up. You may want to back that podium up, your arms are long enough to hit me.
Yeah, well, I can get close. I guess closer to most. This is Shadowhawk Properties West Virginia LLC located 436 Apple Harvest Drive. They have the gun range up on top of that before we get into Virginia. They had applied to the state for managed timberland for that property. We did not get that link. Normally, we get it right at the end of the year, it's like the last thing that we do. But we didn't get that done due to various reasons from the state and from our office. About before the books were closed, so when we finally got that linked up, there is a change in how it will be, should be assessed on books. Currently, the land is assessed at $214,020. The building is assessed at $166,320 for a total of $380,340. After the managed timberland was added to the property or put into that managed timberland account, the assessed value land would go to $102,600. The building value would be just saying at $166,320. Natural resources would be added at $5,960 for a total assessment of $274,880, which is a difference of $105,460.
Well, this is the gun range, it does everything on the inside?
There's approximately 30 acres of where the gun range uses meets for classes and has open areas of the range, but the rest is timberland.
Okay.
How many acres?
Total wise is $148.99 in total.
All right. I repeat, a motion on Mr. Street's recommendation on changing the tax.
Second.
Motion been made, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Have a good day.
Mr. President, if I may, as you're aware, if you look at the proposed agenda for Thursday, that's been posted, this coming Thursday, the 17th should be your last order review and equalization session starting at 2 o'clock. 1 o'clock, well, 1 o'clock is more than 1 because of budgets. They do have two small changes to make, one to what tax class and one to assessment, which they'll be bringing in, but we have no hearing scheduled. So we intend, and in fact, it's on your agenda for Thursday, our intent is to schedule sign and die on the 17th.
Okay.
As you know, the state code says that you can't do sign and die any sooner than the 15th, so this gives you an additional day, but at this time, we want to anticipate anyone coming in. And then we'll fill the rest of Thursday afternoon with budget workshop.
All right. So since there isn't any other activity for today, I guess we'll go ahead and start on our budget workshop for revenues. We'll move down front, go from there, and I'm gonna go get you some more water real quick.
Sherry's here to observe because she intends to take this over next year.
Do what now?
Sherry's here to observe because she intends to take this over next year.
Okay. You go, Sherry.
I'm all for support.
You guys need me down here though?
No, sir.
Yeah. You got your revenue for us, we'll let you stay.
Whoops, we're in the dark. Well, why don't you see? Get up here.
Yeah. Alan, you even want 21, 2021, you want to start right at 2122?
Yeah, let's just do 2122, tie them in case council needs them. They have it in their spreadsheet, so they should be okay.
Big enough for everyone to see? One little bigger?
A little bigger, huh?
Little bigger? I can see it.
I can, I can lift it up a little bit.
Better?
Oh, yeah. Did you put a consensus column together?
I did not. I believe you forgot. Yes, sir, I did. Thank you.
Thank you. And your consensus doesn't include this, the box counts. Is what I think doesn't count. And I'm okay with that.
And you're not feeling? Alan, how you doing, man? Huh? What?
What?
Where'd somebody go to the liquor board act? To get fingerprinted and stuff?
Well, we got a fingerprint, liquor board?
Yeah.
Yeah, ABC, you know.
For an event?
No, just to submit our...
Application?
Well, management, we have another manager now, so... But Google's very vague, it's not giving you like an address to where you...
I would say Secretary of State's office.
Very strange.
Well, you got the liquor commissioner, well, he would know.
I can't get a hold of him, no.
We don't have anything to do with license.
No, 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 I know, I thought it might be his building.
No, you said it's not, it's still not his building.
Space before me, so...
Oh, no doubt. I do that. Keep it all together.
Yeah, so you just want it, congratulations?
Yeah.
Congratulations?
What's that?
Congratulations?
Thank you, it was evolving.
We are live, so we're on.
Oh, okay, oh, hey.
Don't say you hit the camera.
No, no, we're evolving, and we ordered that thing five months ago. Literally, they have a circuit board in there because it's part of the computer, to run it on a timer, and it's a rotisserie smoker, but it took four months to get the circuit board from China. So, yeah, it's good, that thing, I mean, literally, you could stand up inside of it. It's amazing. Thank you.
Brian, or Steve said something about checking over the building permits, because they work with them, so check with them, and say, if not, you're not called state agent.
I tried to call Denny, and he's not answering, I know he's pretty busy, so I just can't. But Google is vague, it doesn't have like a definitive address to like ABC, Markburg, ABC Liquor. No.
West Virginia State.
Okay. You guys have a good day. Thanks, guys, have a good day.
You too, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Tony.
Come in here. Come in here.
Yeah, we're in the here, by the way. Oh, wait a second. Welcome to the party.
Hey, man. Just glad we got to see you down here.
I am too.
You tried to break in here last night, there's a time warp for... They couldn't get any place to fix it. So, you got the problem?
Well, I didn't get the problem till lunch. So, I had to drill it out, I tried to move it in, move it on, nail it, screw it, cut it in the latch, and it's deadbolted. Paul, that's great. I wanted to make it very... Get you out of the way. So, I'm a campaigner, I can't touch it down, but I pulled somebody that is...
Thank you.
They'll figure a way to get it done, move on. That's exactly what I'm doing. I'm on the park, I can now do it. Excuse me, sir.
Yes, sir.
That mother eighty-four homer jacket.
I can't figure out what chair I'm supposed to sit on.
I had the same, so I just moved the tape.
I don't know, Eddie. I can do that, I can do this.
I can move my tape over a little bit here.
Yeah, I'm still, hold it, hold it, I think I got the doctor, now look in there. I can do that, okay.
So, just so the council's aware of the tentative schedule, as I mentioned earlier, you still have two, we have a class, a property class change to be brought in on Thursday afternoon, as well as a change in assessment, so there will be two small changes to the book jet. That session will start at 1:00 on... That session will start at 1:00 on Thursday, and it's hoped that you can go signee die at the end of session on Thursday, so that we can get the certified values done, which we'll talk, the need for that, we'll talk a little bit more. As when we start talking about property taxes. Our intent for now, and we need to know if there's going to be any changes in the schedule, the intent is, the tentative schedule is to bring the department heads and elected officials in on the 24th, which is not this coming Thursday, but the following Thursday. So, that's assuming a number of things, it's assuming that we can get revenues done today, at least tentatively done today, knowing that there's going to have to be some tweaking that has to be done yet, that we can get through expenditures, which typically takes a full day, which we may or may not be able to get through on Thursday afternoon, I would suspect not. Next Monday is a holiday, so as President states, we'll be closed. We have to post the 24th's agenda on Friday, because of the holiday, we can't wait until Monday, so if there's any chance that you want to take the elected officials off, we'll have to remove them and then leave them. I'm in the agenda. If there's any chance that you want to come in on Tuesday, next Tuesday, which is the day after the holiday for the day work session, we need to know that today, because that agenda would have to be posted tomorrow. So, you'll just have, if we go, just kind of keep that in the back of your mind as we go through revenues.
Use the text on Thursday?
Use the text on the day. So, you can either, you can either come in on Tuesday, next Tuesday for the day work session, and present to the electeds on Thursday, or we can bump the electeds back a week, and then you'll just have to give me a day if you want to come in and do it.
Let's shoot for Tuesday, instead of working on Tuesday, let's shoot for the Thursday. Are you okay with that?
Tuesday, 22nd. So, Thursday afternoon, you'll still have to be here for order review and equalization. So, I got nothing for you to do all day, all afternoon.
We did expenditures last year, we did expenditures in the afternoon last year.
We did, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to fill, fill your, your agendas.
When you have to post, you have to be here for those changes, you don't have to send it through to quarters, we didn't post it as a day, we said no, it seemed seventeen.
It's posted as order review and equalization, with signee die at the end of session.
Right, how do you find this? You don't need to plug it, Tuesday's just right, how do you got this?
He's on it. It's Thursday.
Your agenda for Thursday, which we've already posted, has order for review and equalization session seven to begin at 1:00, order of review and equalization presentation by the assessor's office at 1:05, budget workshop number two, begin at 1:10, and then at the end of the session, recess order review and equalization, signee die. So, you have to let me know what you want to do.
We're here in the harvest, but very important, we always bring in the top, yes, that's second.
So, do you want to do, do you not want to do budget, any budget discussion on Thursday, and then just do it on the 22nd?
I say we won't, Eddie, but at the same time, we're concerned to change it on Tuesday. I'm not, right now, I'm quite saying you're right, you're right, or just generally.
Okay. So, Fanny, we'll have to post the agenda tomorrow, the next Tuesday. Still have, still have the electeds in on the 24th?
Yeah. That works. Yeah, I have, it's scheduled, the current building needs to go to 24th, so I have to cancel out.
Yeah, we have the electeds coming in in the morning. We have the electeds coming in at 11:00. That's why I scheduled it to be continued.
Okay with that? Yeah, okay, sure.
Alright, revenues. As you can see, I have my revenue projections done, and I think I've sent you the, my revenue projections a week or so ago. I have budget, I have revenue set at $42,430, $42,430,118. Council President COVID April's already left, that thing, said that I'm way off, and that's okay. Budgets, the, your budget of revenues for this year beginning was $39,827,500. Through the first six months of this year, we have already collected $33,878, $33,878,893. So, I certainly think we'll make a budget this year. So, as we walk through these, I know this is, is redundant, and it's, you, you're aware of what all of this is, but since we are live video streaming for anyone that may be interested in, in the process that you follow, the explanation will be given, and then, you know, we'll talk about your projections. The first matter for your consideration is your unassigned fund balance, which we also call the unencumbered fund balance. As you know, that's simply the general fund monies in the bank account as of June 30th of the year, that has not been restricted, encumbered, or committed for a specific purpose. We actually use this fund to pay our bills for July and part of August, until we start getting our regular revenue stream through our tax collections.
Say a couple things, if our... If our taxes this year beginning will start at $22,000, $22,714,000, people mind the throwback there, please, in session here, 2% of the new revenue, that's correct, I think it's correct, maybe that we can only pick up $227,000.
That's, that's, that's only existing from...
Right, I can't do it, but I mean, that's, but that's the, that's what we're going to talk about this whole time.
Well, wait, can you hear how much we brought in for the votes this year?
And now, I'm not saying your numbers are way off, I'm just saying with the, with the team that we had, or if we don't count that, but with the team that we have, the ranks, that is on the list, and they're doing such a good job, so that's, that's where it's on the, puts them at the top, is the rank one.
And we can't, this is a... I was going to say, I, and we can't use that as a, because we're earning revenue stream. So, for fiscal year 21, 22, back to unencumbered fund balance, for fiscal year 21, 22, as you know, last year at this time, we projected an unencumbered fund balance of 4.2 million. It came in at $7,373,719. We, that was by design, we decided, after the budget was set, knowing that that unencumbered fund balance was going to be that high, decided to let it, to let it go. This excess was due to overperforming revenues, lower than expected expenditures, and primarily the CARES Act reimbursement. CARES Act reimbursement that we've received to date is $5,716,378. So, as you can see, the lion's share of that certainly was due to CARES Act, although we did move, if you remember, $2.5 million of the CARES Act money into what we call quality life fund. So, certainly, it's not all CARES Act money, but it was some, it really was some very, very strong revenues. For the current fiscal year, fiscal year 22, 23, I've projected an unencumbered fund balance of $5,000,000. I'm very, very comfortable with this. We continue to right-size the operating budgets, but as you, as we went through budget presentations for the past two months, you can see that, you know, a lot of the operating budgets are well below their expenditure level. Everyone, almost without exception, has been very, has been very judicial in, in their spending habits, and the council watches very closely the expenditures, and I think it's trickled down so that department heads and elected officials also know that you do watch spending patterns. Our revenues continue to, to be strong, which again has added to the unencumbered fund balance, and just as an example, as of January 31st of 2021, our reconciled fund balance, the money that we had in the bank at the end of January 2021, was $10,417,022. That was even with the CARES Act money. This current January, January 31st of 2022, our reconciled fund balance was $9,819,500 in the absence of CARES Act. So, that's only a swing of about $597,000. So, that's still an indication that our revenue stream is, is strong. As you know, you know, we did provide, the council did provide some compensation increases of about 10% this year, so we had 10% of compensation and compensation-related benefits. You also authorized the migration of the assessor's office from a 35-hour work week to a 40-hour work week, which added an additional 12.5% to compensation and compensation-related benefits for the assessor's office. And you provided some additional positions in the budget that were not approved last year, for example, last year, you put two full-time uniform law enforcement deputies in contingency and two firefighters. Since that time, we've added four cops-related deputy... Since that time, we've added four cops-related deputies. We've added three firefighters, one above what was originally in contingency. Two positions in our IT department, which was very, very much needed, as well as a variety of grant-funded positions in recovery resources and the DRC. So, having said all that, I know our, our record, our unencumbered fund balance, our reconciled fund balances are strong, but our expenses are up to, to the, to just payroll limit, to, to about 2.2 million dollars above and beyond last year. As the council is aware, I'm always concerned about sustaining the sustainability of our budget. I'm reluctant to construct a budget that's too reliant on our unencumbered fund balance, but as I mentioned, we need to have that balance in place in order to assure that all of our bills in July and, and at least half of all of this is being, being met. Based on my revenue stream of forty-two million four hundred and thirty dollars in, in accompanying expenditures, that five million dollars unencumbered fund balance represents about 11.78%, which is about one and a half months of projected expenses. One and a half months, projected expenses would be about 5.3 million dollars. So, I, I think the five million dollars is, is a good number. I will admit, it's probably, it's probably a little conservative, but as you know, you're not paying the,
Shop?
Pardon me?
You're not going on a shopping spree.
I am not going on a shopping spree, so, five million dollars unencumbered fund balance. So, take your shot. Well, we budgeted, we budgeted 4.2, and it came in at 7.3. Well, the American Rescue Act, the way money is not in this. That was put in, in a separate account. We will get the second distribution of that in June. So that is not included in any of the general fund numbers at all. Nah, whatever we've got.
Yeah, well, but a lot of money, though.
Yeah.
Should we look at, take it for at least 4%?
Yeah, yeah, just, just, that's the interest payment for us.
Interest couldn't have been too far off from what was projected because if you look at the, 920, with 920, that's the, that's the interest back from,
That's your profit. That should be your first transfer tax. And, and remember, this is just our first pass-through, so these are all tentative numbers that, you know, we'll refine further before you really start setting your, your expenditures. And remember, transfer taxes will lift again this year, was a third, a third, and a third. Plus, we had taken some steps.
Actually, I have six months, so actually, we have another five months.
Alright. Your transfer taxes used to be a third and a third and a third, plus the council took the action in August of 17, add that extra 55 cents.
Your number up here, are we saying, that that's the, that's been the handle these years, right?
That's for six months.
Yeah.
These are six-month actual collective.
Right, so, basically, last year, we anticipated unencumbered fund balance due to 10.7% of the projected budget this year. If you start out using your five million, you get 1.7%.
Right.
So it's, it's grown by 1%. Which, absolutely, makes sense.
Looks like this one's ready to go.
He's strumming over there. Put a little yellow highlight. If that 24 million highlights mine number, that's a reminder to me.
Oh, thank you.
That's making me proud.
Alan, did you say 5.3?
I said it in five.
What's your, you, what's your projection?
It's five.
What you're thinking compared to last year?
Seven.
Seven.
That's, at the end of the day, I think that's what we're looking at. I'm in for a growth, particularly. Alright, property taxes for the current, for next fiscal year. Spent, I've spent a lot of time going through some of the early, some of the early numbers that, that Larry has given us. This is property taxes that we expect to collect next fiscal year based on the certified values provided by the assessor. We normally don't receive those certified values until two or three days after you go to sign and die, so I'm hopeful by the middle of next week, I will have the certified values. You know, historically, our property taxes account for 60% to 65% of our total revenue, but based on the, the current budget, for the first time since I've been doing this, as a percentage of the total, our property tax is actually is below the 60% threshold. Property taxes for the current fiscal year represents about 58.11% of our total revenue stream. This is really due to, again, the larger-than-normal unencumbered fund balance, but we've had some real strong revenue sources other than property taxes. For example, the property transfer tax is strong. The France, the franchise fee, as you know, we renegotiated that contract a couple of years ago. That's now over a million dollars. And inspection fees, which is a product of the, of the economy, is strong. So, for the current fiscal year, for 21, 22, this council decided to leave the levy rate at 1406. It has been in,
Everybody caps out 14, 147.
14, 1430.
1430 is 141?
1406. It's been 1406 since fiscal year 17, 18. That's when we were hit with the rollback.
But it was a power.
It was in 1410. So it's 1617, it was 1410. In 1718, due to the rollback, we had to roll back to 1406. For 21, 22, the assessed value for tax purposes That was an increase over 2021. For 2021, our assessed value for all properties for tax purposes Now, this is important because of the assessed value, that's 6.4 billion dollars in assessed value. Personal property tax accounts for 740,819,180 and generates slightly more than 4.1 million dollars. That's important to keep in the back of your mind because, as you know, for the past two years, the West Virginia legislate, legislation, as well as the governor, has talked about the abolishment of personal property tax, which will probably, would probably not affect next year's budget, but could affect subsequent year's budgets. So as you go through your expenditures, we need to keep that in mind, that there could be a loss of revenue sometime in the future of about four million dollars. That impacts the Board of Education, the federal Board of Education, does us.
I tried to, I'm just going to mark, which I also says four million dollars to the Board of Education at around 18% there, 82% or 80%, I put 82. It's 18.677.
Yeah, and I, I don't know.
And that's not trying to say that one.
Yeah, I'm thinking, they can take that much out of the budget, about replace.
Well, there's, there's talk, I'm gonna talk about.
We can absorb.
We can absorb that with the whole success.
Yeah. But just, again, trying to keep that in, in the back of your mind. As you can see, as of January 31st of 2021, we've collected almost 14 million dollars, about 61.6% of current property tax, which is in line with previous years.
So we generally, we generally collect about 60%?
We're right, we're right where, right where we need to be. We've been real good, and if you'll remember, a couple of years ago, we were missing our property tax projections by a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. And once we calculate the gross tax revenue, then we take the 2% off for projected tax discounts, and then we take the tip off. And then after that, the Assessor's 2% comes off. Prior to a couple of years ago, and, and we can adjust the percentage for delinquencies, exonerations, and uncollected taxes, we'd been setting that at around 3%, which was just about, we, we were missing it by a couple hundred thousand dollars. So, we bumped that percentage for delinquencies, exonerations, and uncollectable taxes from 3% to 5%. And since that time, we've been right, we've been right where we, right where we need to be. So, I'm real confident that this 22.7 million dollars, we'll, we'll collect that and maybe a, a little bit, and that's a good number. As you know, the end of February and all of March is our second busiest tax collection period. As the mortgage companies pay the second half of property taxes through escrow. Again, I'm recommending that our projections for delinquencies, exonerations, and uncollectable taxes be maintained at 5% and projected tax discounts stay at 2. For the period beginning 2016 through 20, actual annual increases in property tax averaged about 927,442. In 2021, because of so much new property being added to the tax rolls, our property taxes increased by 1,296,572, or 6.35%. And in the current fiscal year, tax revenues increased by slightly more than a million dollars. Now, as I mentioned in an email last week, I am concerned about the potential for rollback this year. The assessor told us early on, as part of review and equalization, that they had sent out quite a few increases, notifications that the assessment had increased by more than 10%. So, that's why in the back of my mind, I, I think we might be hit by a rollback. However, this is what you'll find particularly interesting, but I did anyway. Based on the preliminary information that the Assessor's Office has already filed with the State Tax Office, Berkeley County added 163,768,580 in new real estate.
That number coming from the assessor?
From the, from the assessor, that's been sent to the state.
Well, that's due, that's due to the value of the real estate.
No, no, so, alright, that's, and, that's all new. That's all brand-new real.
How much?
Brand-new, brand-new real estate, 163,769,580 in new real estate. And 59,565,787 in new personal property tax. The total of those two, a brand-new property, is
It sounds like a big number, but it's about here.
Well, compared to the, you wanna know what it was the current, the current fiscal year?
Yeah.
The current fiscal year, last year, I call it last year, but it's the current year, we added 134,438,740 in real estate. But only 14,347,736 for personal property.
So basically, 80 million more?
So based on 1406, I think 24 million dollars is pretty, pretty conservative right now. We're just doing budget, we give them by the numbers. Unless they, unless they get too far, we got ID, you know, page, but right now, it's pretty good. Okay.
Alright, so, I got some.
Tase the heavy side.
I got some. Any big questions or stupid questions? The 3% rollback, this is, you don't miss me. This is your 12, 12.
He's putting 42 million dollar budget together with his fingers, yeah, that's.
Well, that's why I get, at the end of every day, I get. So, we're, let's talk about the rollback, 3%.
Hey, why don't we talk about the rollback? Cause I got a question, though.
3%, we, we keep saying we only gain 1% every year, but you can't take 2% off every year. Once, the first year can lose 2%, but after that, you gain 3%. It should be, right? You can't keep taking it out. So our revenue should grow on old tax base by 3% every year. Now, we'll miss out one, the, the 2% goes to excessive, we'll miss out on the addition of this 2% from the previous year, but we won't lose 2% every year. You lose only 3% the first year, does that make sense?
Right.
But you, right, you, you okay with that, too?
Agree.
Right? We, we can't compound it.
Yeah.
Alright, go ahead. So what stupid question I have? Alright, so the next question I have is a statement, not a question, I guess. Our, our levy rate is a 14.06, and you max out at 14.3. Our rollback could affect that number. But what happens, every time we lose that really to 10%, cause you won't get 10%. I know that's not what happened. But, that's a compounded figure. Right? I mean, that's,
So, so, and that's where my question comes. So if, if we're losing, So, so, and that's where my question is, so if, if we're losing, if we're, if we're limited to how much we can collect additionally, or because of the rollback, because of the rollback, is the assessor still collecting that?
No.
The tax office still collecting that? So even though they put out all these ten percent increases, that people's taxes went up, you're telling me they're not having to pay that?
No. If they were paying, then it would show up in our revenues. You'd have money going somewhere, I mean, that's what I'm saying, it's going somewhere, unless they're still collecting it.
Well, wait a second now, wait a second. You, you still, correct me if I'm wrong, but I still not convinced, I did.
Oh, sorry, sir.
You're trying to get me off track. You know how my mind works, let's go back to the past first. So we all know that we can only, or somebody can only take it up point two six four percent for the levy rate, but yet we're losing out on, on, on up to ten percent of increased values. It's absolutely insane for us to, to, to do that. So what I'm saying is, what happens if we go through the process and we, and it's obvious nobody's complaining about the values or the heat here?
Right.
Everybody understands, you know, the rule of thumb, if you don't want your value, here's a check, we'll see you later. So why lose, continue to lose that value that's gonna be compounded year after year until, which, you know, we always know that the, the floor, when you hit a recession, and why would we not, why would we not comfortably, uh, reduce the levy rate to balance out? A new twist.
We can.
And it just came to me.
Which is, which is just the opposite of like you.
Well, it gives you more reserve, and it gives you the value that, that people, people understand. But just imagine, now, the only thing is, is, is how does the levy and the bonds work for a school board, is it based on value greed rollback, is it based on a flat rate, or is it, because if we, at the end of the day, what I'm saying is, is if, let's say we go, instead of three percent, we have a hearing that goes up six percent. All right, and, and the question, the thing, to answer your question, Dan, and I don't know, but it looks like the, the assessor still only does a third accounting every year, so.
Right, he does the whole county.
He does the whole county.
He does the whole county every year. So if he sends out notice, he goes across the whole county. He has to do a third, he got, but he does the whole, he does the whole, the whole county every year.
For the fact of the case, it should have went up to something to take the last three years. I think true value, you know that as well as I've been.
But that's, that's what I'm saying, he's gotta be, that money, that money is, I mean, if he sends out the notice, it's that your taxes went up X amount, X amount this year. So, so that's already set, that's already set.
You think if you roll back, your levy rate will change?
What, what I'm saying is, that's already set.
No, I know, but.
Because he sent it out, that's that, that's what's coming, that's what's coming to the state.
Well, if we get hit with rollback, the levy rate does change. It went from fourteen ten to fourteen oh six.
Last year.
Five years.
That's probably convincing, we, 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 we got, we're losing.
Well, no, the, the state auditor's office said, you're hit with rollback, you can't keep it at fourteen ten, you have, by, by code, you have to reduce to fourteen oh six.
And that's how we got to that.
Oh, yeah. Now, that came from state auditor's office. And as soon as I plug the certified values, like I have the spreadsheet that I use, so as soon as I get the certified values, I'll put them in my spreadsheet, then I'll have your property tax. But my prop- but my cap- my spreadsheet does not have that, that safeguard for rollback. So then to, to reasons, I, I go to the, to the levy rate and put in the property taxes and the levy rate to see number one, that my calculations are still right, which they usually are. But if it's gonna be subject to rollback, as soon as I plug it into the levy document, it's gonna tell me, you guys are over, you gotta roll it back.
The rollback makes the definition, you're rolling back the levy.
You're rolling back the levy rate, we rolled the levy rate back from fourteen ten to fourteen oh six. Now, having said that, as you know, you can go above that rollback rate.
Up to ten percent of, of a year.
So you could, you could have gone from, instead of fourteen ten to fourteen oh six, you could have gone, you could have gone to fourteen sixteen. You could have gone ten points above the levy rate.
Ten, ten, but it's never, it's ten percent. But you know, so does the value stay? The value stays, so we're not losing the value.
Liability to the ticket holder, the void, when you roll back, liability to our homes, our tax ticket, it comes off if you roll that back, you know the assessment.
So we're not losing the value.
You're not losing value, but we're losing what we can collect, so we're rolling back the assess- we're rolling back the levy rate.
I mean, it's crazy, I mean, we're still trying to understand this rollback, even after eleven years.
Well, if, yeah, and my thought is, how do we roll him back when he's already sent out bills?
He didn't send any bills, I mean, he just sent. That's just the fact that your assessment, that gets adjusted.
But he didn't send it out there.
He won't send the bills out until you send the levy rate.
Assessor only sent the, the levy, I'm saying, your.
Yes. Doesn't necessarily mean you're paying him, but you pay proceedings, you know that, no?
I guess, I guess that confused me when he said, he sent out all the notices, but he sent out.
The assessor.
That's just the notice of assessment.
Yeah, the assessor says it went up, the sheriff sends the adjusted bill out.
Yeah, the sheriff, the, the tax office does it. And that's why they don't know, that's why we was asking John Street about the value on, on the bills, he said, I don't have that, because we can't, so, so let's, let's roll back and levy rate set.
Right. So that, that twenty-four million dollars, I think, is, is pretty close. If, yeah, I think it's pretty close, even if you gave us, hit with rollback, I think we're back to. It, it, I was a little overwhelmed by the new property that went on the tax rolls issue.
Which was sixty million more than last year total.
Seventy point five million.
And how much did we, how much did we increase, uh, last year, you said that from the year before?
It went up, um, from the year before, it increased by a million.
All right, can't believe.
It went up over, just slightly more than a million dollars, about five percent.
All right, so how much did we collect last year, just from last year? Or if they don't? Other than. Thirty-eight, about thirty. Forty-some billion. Personal, private.
Are you asking for?
Questions. The value.
The values?
Last year, it was one hundred and thirty-some billion in real estate.
Well, the, the total, the total collected last year, even actual taxes collected.
That's new.
Well, I can give you the assessment.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
The new, the new properties that were put on the books last year.
Wait a second, wait a second, I had a whole little story, all right, give it to me, I'll do my last thing.
Last year was a hundred and forty-eight billion.
Yeah.
Billion, or I'm sorry, million.
One forty-eight million?
Hundred and forty-eight million, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-six. That was the current year.
All right, and what's this, this year's two, two fifty-something?
No, the current year's two, two, three.
That's when you're getting, getting ready for a second, probably before, right?
Right, for the.
Two, three?
Two hundred and twenty-three million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Which is an increase over the previous year of seventy-four million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one. That's just new.
And try to figure this one out. What was the increase of the taxes last year from that?
Uh, a million, three, nine fifty-nine.
Million, three.
Nine five nine.
How much of that was, uh, um, you said, how much was real, or personal property?
Personal property, um, was fifty-nine million, fifty-nine point five million about.
And that's, that's all pilots excluded.
Right.
Think about it.
Huh?
Pilots excluded from that, huh? Which if they, in our mind, if we, if you hear somebody tells them.
Personal property's up.
You said there's, there's no technology.
There's new GMCs.
It's, 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 it's that new technology out of town. All right, so.
So that would have been about, I can't work it like you.
Dan, you may have put as many miles in your twenty-twenty ones, you down that seven P, man?
Hey, hey, hey.
My property did, how many miles down the line there?
Thirty.
Are you serious?
Thousand or a hundred?
Thousand.
I can't, ten thousand on my brand new truck.
That's what I'm telling you.
They don't work out when we're sitting in the garage, do they?
Yeah, I got a comment yesterday, that I'm surprised, that's leading up, I thought maybe. All right, I've done my math.
I think the number's gonna go up from eight dollars more than now, it's got.
You're probably. Four point five, huh? Twenty four, four point five, if I'm being precise, I'd say twenty-four million, six sixty-seven, seven fifty-seven.
See, I told you, Sherry.
Six sixty-seven.
Come on, twenty-four six.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, I think. Point four five. And why is yours in yellow, Alan?
Because that's, until I have the certified values.
You just don't trust yourself?
Oh, I, it's, it's a good number, but it's.
My number, so you got plus one, not one.
But my, my other numbers, I feel real, real good about, that one is, I, I know is real, real low. Um, but I'm, that, just that rollback. But.
That's up to the assessor.
The increase, the increase in assessment as percentage of the whole, which is what they're looking at. It, it may, you know, and I've run this a couple of ways, that, how many, how many letters have he sent, sent out? Ninety couple thousand, they tell us. So ninety thousand letters of increase above the ten percent as a percentage of the whole, of all, of all assessments, it may, because property values are so high, it may keep us below that rollback threshold. It's gonna be close. So I agree with you, Dan, that twenty-four million could be low.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty-five. I'll do.
Chuck Young is coming in to present your financial statements, the first, third, and fourth. It's good to meet Berkeley, isn't it?
It is.
Didn't do that.
No.
Whenever somebody, well, whenever, on the board meeting, I go to, never had a good month. Our CFO would wear the money pad, so I expect her to wear a money pad.
Oh, I'll see what I can do.
All right.
Maybe a scarf.
Maybe scarf, maybe scarf.
Like I talked today on the radio, I mean. But after, you know, looking where the airport authorities came in the last three years, four years, right? I mean, Nick, Nick D, I saw, I saw, I saw, I mean, three hundred and some thousand dollars, two point five million dollars.
Too many, when that started, it was too many, too late.
So, so, I mean, it's just, it's crazy.
I remember when I played it with this one.
That's, that's all the good stuff that's happening.
I remember when they argued about spending twenty dollars for, maybe somebody's lawn.
So I spoke about that, yeah, I spoke about that, only because I know the bridge money. You know, look what happens when you give somebody bridge money, and what you believe and what they're doing.
Well, you can't, you can't grow, there you're gonna have money, it just ain't gonna happen, you know?
There's a, there's a bill out there, Nick and I are not Nick, but Neil and I talked yesterday, there's a bill down there, much, wants to combine, uh, airport authorities or airport authorities together. Aeronautics Commission, the port authorities, combine all of that. And this money, these monies aren't gonna get into work. Actually, they need to take, like we do, they need to take that step higher with the Aeronautics Commission, because they're the ones, like in Virginia, compare us to another state, but they're the ones that go in, uh, stand up right, they're the ones that go in and has the matching money for the land thing that they're doing. And then, you know, as a county, we should be able to pull from that because of the projections that we need to do what we need to do. Now, there's a heck of a lighting project that's going on, and a lot of that is, and they're, they're gonna go on, follow that now. I'm nervous about it.
Are they ever being LED?
Yes, why not, it can't go on all, because the impalement lights would have gone, put those into the salt strip, and the G's don't pick up LEDs. So they're gonna have to stay with the incandescents on the.
Is that the everything, is it LED?
They will, for the, uh, for the, for the edge, but when you get into the impalement lights, would have gone, had like three thousand, the salt strip, all those, and I'll be projecting up and you have to sort of, and that's.
I would say that our airport in the last couple of years has increased at a larger percentage than, than probably any airport in the state has ever done.
Okay, moving on.
Yeah. It's only taking us an hour to get two figures.
Look at the vault process.
Delinquent year, at the end of the day, you folks are the ones that are re held accountable for this, so you take as much time as you want. Um, delinquent taxes, every year, we think the amount of delinquent taxes is gonna go down.
Yeah, because it was not, it was.
You know, the economy's strong, people should be flush with money, um, but as you can see, that's not the case.
They're spending on.
In two thousand twenty-one, we budgeted a million dollars, but we only collected two hundred ninety-four thousand, six oh six, and, and based on some previous years, that was an anomaly.
Why, yeah, how'd that happen?
Well, I think that was an anomaly.
Well, wait a second, we need to find that money.
Well, it's out there some way, it was discoded somewhere, I'm sure.
Okay, all right, just go to the state, I was.
The state didn't have it. For the current fiscal year, we budgeted a million dollars, and through the first six months, we collected one million, forty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars. So I think some of that may not have been coded as quickly as we should, and, and Sherry and I are heading back this morning, and, and we're, we have a, we're gonna correct a lot of this, review this stuff that have actually been everybody recorded in a few years. So I set it for a million dollars next year, I left it at a million.
Yes, I know.
Swat. The train getting on the spread again.
I'm shocked.
One thing I really want us to entertain this year, and, and this was led on me back years ago, about, if we come out of recession, we have less control, we're, the, 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 the taxes as well, and we wanted to continue to hold the gap, having real power. I think this year, we can get to the tax office, I would like to get more money instead of that such useful ability. Yeah, they've got a five-year track that they're now, what is going on now? By the way, the second one here, they turned back down here, they changed. Anybody know how that's going with the legislation right now, concession about?
Didn't she, didn't she, um, it's tough, but that's just last.
I haven't gotten to her, I don't know yet.
I, I just couldn't do it this morning. About that, he had a conversation.
All right, I'm sorry. All right, it's Dave.
Everybody likes a meeting?
Uh, yeah. We're already at, oh, we're doing now.
Yeah, we're. There's a double number that break keep them. Does that generally go to? Does that generally go to more of a beginning, down, or? Yes, sir. Yeah, that's, we're not gonna cut much more than that, may, maybe a little bit, not, not too much.
Yeah. Supplemental pay.
Well, did everybody decide on their, oh, yeah.
We're down there.
Everybody, okay, supplemental taxes, that, they classify that as property taxes, not otherwise classified. That's just a general catch-all term. Um, in twenty-twenty-one, we budgeted three hundred fifty thousand, we collected six oh three, three forty-five. For twenty-one, twenty-two, um, we budgeted four twenty-five, we collected two eighty-three, seven seventy-five, or sixty-six point eight percent to date through six months, I just kept it at four twenty-five.
And I'm asking my wife, she's trying to lose change to fill up the kitchen, picking back, so. Pretty good bucket, ain't it? She said, no, that's my change.
She was gonna say, good luck, how'd that work out? I'm okay with the same.
Yeah, that's a big dollar. So you're saying we don't have enough revenue costs, is what you're saying?
Mr. Weaker, you can.
Redemption from state auditor, um, if you'll remember, these are fees collected by the state auditor through the redemption of and classification of title of real property, which, which is formally held for religious, charitable, and educational purposes, and improperly exempted from taxes. As an example, the wellness center and hospital, if you remember a couple of years ago, we went through all of that, it was for all intent purposes, uh, a nonprofit, and they were saying for years and years and years, it was a five-one-one C three, and then through, you know, court case, and we found out that it wasn't, so we, they, they had to go back to pay property taxes, so that's kind of an example of that. So for the current, for twenty-twenty-one, we budgeted, um, nineteen hundred dollars, we collected eleven thousand, five fifty-five. For the current fiscal year, we budgeted five, through the first six months, we collected one thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars, but in the month of January, we had a windfall. So then, through the first seven months, we have now collected five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents, so we're in budget, so I just kept it at five thousand.
Good, good.
I mean, it's not very much money, but.
Let me tell you what the state of Virginia does, whenever you have a piece of property, county, and you file for previous taxes, the timberland, the timber management, that if you sell it, and it's used for a different purpose, and therefore, you have to pay it up back in five years, use taxes, as to what it would have been in a state that you're using. Back five years.
If somebody else uses it, yes.
Yes.
That's what you gotta do.
Everybody okay with five grand in commonwealth? I mean, it's not that much, so.
Hey, every time, I know.
Um, tax lien surplus, um, that's all monies collected for properties sold in tax sales that are in excess of the amount of taxes, interest, and expenses due. For twenty-twenty-one, we budgeted sixteen thousand, we collected, uh, seven thousand, sixty-eight, seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, for the current fiscal year, we budgeted ten thousand, eight hundred, but we've only collected two thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars to, to date, which is twenty-seven point one percent, I did bump that back to five thousand.
So you're saying if you weren't giving the taxes up, did I once you say?
Yes, sir, yeah. So I, I bumped it back to five.
That's gonna change in that.
Taxes, penalties, interest, and publication fees, as you know, when we go to tax sale, um, when the property is redeemed or sold, uh, there's penalties, interest, and fees that are collected as part of those delinquent taxes. In twenty-twenty-one, we budgeted four hundred and fifty thousand, we collected five nineteen, five thirty, this year, we budgeted three twenty-five, with one tax sale behind us, we've collected a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, ninety-nine dollars, or fifty-five point one percent. Um, I kept it at three twenty-five, we still have another big tax sale in progress.
You got your, you got your, your financial report of the, of the, of the, our, our.
You should have your spreadsheet. For the first six months, for the six months.
So like, there's, how much I would spend in advertising?
Um, with the tax department?
Yeah.
That would have been, that would not for, we haven't put anything in four oh nine yet. Four oh nine, which is the, this, uh, advertised publication, budgeted seventy-three, spent to date, thirty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents, with an unencumbered fund balance of thirty-nine thousand, six hundred.
More than that on advertising?
We've only spent forty-five point seven percent to date on advertising, just for the tax part, just the delinquent taxes.
Okay. What complication do we have those?
That's the second sale, that's the one that's coming up, that's the big one. It'll come back in about April, May, say that's in.
How much do we spend in, how much do we spend in expenses, you, you're pilot, the last year?
No.
I'd love to try and say, this should be a money making, you know, for us, and that'll cost us more money what we get.
Oh, we.
It costs us more, less money what we get.
We collect more than what we spend.
Right. Yeah, I'm seeing it in the, in the, now, it's returning it back.
Just.
I'm, I'm good at three twenty-five. Can you change from three twenty-five?
Alright. You back on point?
You act like you know us or something.
This number is bigger, you read their attention.
Alright, I'm okay with that.
Property transfer tax. Um, as you know, this is, um, a product of the economy, um, and it's a product of the real estate market. It's the excise tax associated with the transfer in real estate. We increased it from a dollar ten per five hundred to a dollar sixty-five per five hundred effective August first of two thousand seventeen. Um, at that time, a third went to the state, a third went to foreland preservation, and a third, plus the extra fifty-five cents, came to us. In fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, which was two years ago, this would have been the second year currently, they began the ten-year phase out of the state's portion. So in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, which was the first year, we budgeted two million, we collected three million, six thirty-three, four seventy-seven. For the current fiscal year, we budgeted two point five million, and through the first six months, we collected two million, five twenty-eight, eight eighty-two.
So the third that went to the state, it goes up every year, I think.
Ten percent comes back to us every year over ten years.
Ten percent of the third.
So, for example, last fiscal year, we got ten percent of their third, for this current fiscal year, we get twenty percent of their third, and for next fiscal year, we'll get thirty percent of their third.
Part of it, what, we try to accelerate that.
So I set it at three million. Yeah, well, there, there.
Three, three point five.
Yeah, I think, I think Alan's numbers, so, but I, I'd love to be concerned. And Dan, in the, the previous year, the year prior to this one, um, we budgeted two million, we collected three point six, uh, change.
Just so you know, Mrs. Mark, she's proud, and the transaction's gonna, not, anyway, four prime months, million dollar plus each month, property, million month, or four consecutive. That's where I guess we see.
Third, it's, we give the third goes to foreland, fore.
Plus the fifth tax.
Or maybe, or maybe that. We get, we get a third, plus, next year, we get a third, plus, plus the fifty-five cents, plus thirty percent of the state's portion next year.
Alright, so, I, I'll bounce out again, I'm.
I'm shocked.
What about trigger? Alright, so, one of the things that we've always said, is, it's, it screws something, is that we base our contributions to parts of the grant at our, our.
Not in terrible.
I know, I know, but the court, I don't allocate it. Right. What would happen if, which doesn't make any sense, right, doesn't make any sense. What happens if we got to transfer tax?
That's okay, as long as the economy's strong, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of real estate transactions there.
If you get it, the, the economy helps.
I mean, that's how, I mean, you saw how the hotel motel tax, you see how the hotel motel tax affected them the last two years, and we were just now getting back to pre-pandemic levels, the hotel motel tax. Be almost better, taking and saying that you're going to, um, allocate so much.
Percentage of the tax dollars?
Either based on the population.
Right, you're being taxed on our population, basically saying like a library, but, at the same time, you can't hold anybody's hand, but then, live with their money.
Right. I mean, you could almost mirror the, the, the special acts for the library.
But, hey, the, the.
Yeah. So for example, if, if you did that for coming fiscal year, instead of three hundred and forty thousand dollars, it, it would be dealt with that, and plus. And that's absolutely a product of.
Which is.
Act of.
Which is recurring. It's gonna be careful about recurring, that would think, what to, to learn, go have, earn some thousand dollars.
The, the special acts, the, the special act for the library is hard to learn, we have to do that, we don't have a choice, but even if the council decides collectively, by consensus, or by, you know, decide to take form action, and codify it, that you're gonna mirror what the library is, that doesn't necessarily mean, you know, and it would be with the understanding that, it depends on the economy. You know, if the bottom drops out, and we have to, we have to cut, we have to cut nine percent out of operating, like we did a couple of years ago, um, I think it's unrealistic, I think we, we need to find.
Everybody cash.
Just they would have to cut.
Right, right. So basically, the library would be, this, it would be, it doesn't have to be the same percentage, I think it's, very, to, to, to give, to go the same percentage of the library right now, because I mean, you gotta be careful of that, but what you could do is, is do a slight percentage less than a library, right? And then, we'd even, we just have to simplify it, because then we could take away the, the half of the hotel motel tax, and then we can turn back around, and we can, all the, the special one that we did again, you'll take that away.
And you could bring the average, the, as you know, this, it requires that we give fifty percent of hotel motel tax file to the CBB, that's hard rare. Yeah, fifty percent is central discretion, as long as it's for a tourism or, um, some type of related activity, so you got a new, correct, ground house, you could also be used for the. I, I'd have to look at that.
Be used for all the green space and all that.
I mean, if you, I mean, if you decide you wanna do that, a cultural, you gotta see like, the one ten, it definitely could use your one ten, bring the door on.
I'd like to check to know, like, we're gonna get into the spreadsheet, or, or try something about that, uh, the only thing we've gotta watch, Kim, Kim, as we was talking, is, we've gotta watch the, the money that we will give them to keep up our properties, we, they. We don't want our properties, we don't want our properties to go down, and then come back and say, hey, the roof was leaking, we need to give us two hundred thousand dollars for it.
Well, if you remember, in your past, they did do it this year, but in your past, they, they would have three requests, they would have hotel, hotel tax, what is their half, they would have a general fund contribution to the operating expenses, and they would have a, a capital request, and that capital request was typically, um, for, for.
Right, right.
But the, the, all that, all, and some other things.
HPs.
Yeah. Okay.
One other thing, before, you know, um, one of the players I've committed, and I made sure to make it last week, and whatever things, I didn't see where he got any revenue from the CBB.
Um, they actually did get two most different.
Would have to do it back.
Exactly.
Every time.
But that, every time, so just, I really like CBB to say, okay, we're gonna be here, twenty-five or fifty thousand more a year, because we want to move it down. So I think to check.
Well, and, and the, the.
The, like I said.
But the CBB is actually, how they can give out money too, so they have criteria, they have files, to be able to, um, to fund things, so I don't know, I mean, I'll look into that, I don't know if that, if that qualifies. That's right, and they, they actually, there's a, uh. I have, I have, yeah, I have, like, but, uh, when you get, and, but there's one for, for the, uh, for the government.
I mean, I, I understand that, but kind of, I feel, I'm, I'm, see what the people resolve.
Well, but they, they shouldn't be, I mean, they, they don't have the ability to chase them.
Oh, no, they have.
Yeah, they're going to, to be able to, you all need that, but, um, Rob, Rob, I mean, Rob should have made a plan, and people, you know, so.
Very fortunate. Well, I appreciate that, when you're a better guy, I'll get the people better value.
Well, and then you can, you can, you can create better.
Right, there's more of that.
But it's got to be, yeah.
Alright, Mr. Davis, back to you.
Oil and gas severance, um, as you know, it's kind of inconsequential to us, that's the tax assessment, gas. Oil and gas severance, um, as you know, it's kind of inconsequential to us, that's the tax assessed on gas and oil wells, it's kind of like our coal severance. Um, the tax is collected for gas and oil collected in other parts of the state. The tax is collected by the Department of Tax and Revenue and distributed to local governments. In two thousand twenty-one, we budgeted one seventy-five, we collected one forty-one, one eighty-five. For the current fiscal year, we collected, we budgeted two hundred, and through the first six months, we budgeted, or we collected a hundred ninety thousand thirty dollars or ninety-five percent. I actually bumped that up a little bit because I think oil and gas production has been an increase.
Well, the tax is based, the tax is based on the cost.
Right.
So, you know, I mean, we already know the cost is going way up, so.
Well, no, this is the tax that.
The tax, the tax rate, the state.
That state charges to gas and oil or traction, companies that do the extraction, fracking and things like that.
Yeah, but that, isn't that be tied to what their value is on them?
Yes.
So, I mean, that's what I'm saying, so that's going up.
So. So I think we'll collect two fifty this year, so I'd send it to fifty.
The only thing that scares me about that is that the, the president in office doesn't have an hour and it's not for.
Random.
Random. So, that's something that scares me about that, I mean, there's not one that would do anything. One would be sell us out, you know, but, um, just without stating that I'm looking at two hundred.
You like selling.
How many?
Okay, wine and liquor.
And we've, we've been, you know, for the last few years since this changed, you've only been hitting this number pretty hard.
We've been doing good with wine and liquor, and I think Sherry now lives in the Inwood area, so I fully expect our, our wine and liquor tax from big affluent block.
Right.
Um, tax on the purchase of intoxicating liquors, um, if you'll remember, we all went through the clean air regulations of two thousand fourteen. That was enacted effective July first of two thousand fourteen, and at that time, we did see a drastic decrease in the wine and liquor tax, but it has been recovering over time. In two thousand twenty-one, we budgeted four hundred and twenty thousand, we collected five ninety-two. In the current fiscal year, we budgeted five twenty-five. Through six months, we had gotten three oh two seven thirty-nine, now it's distributed quarterly, it's not a monthly distribution. We just received, um, the quarterly distribution for October, November, December, um, which isn't in the six-month calculation, so with that, um, we're at four hundred and fifty-four thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-three cents or eighty-six point five percent. Also, remember that, um, in two thousand nineteen, they passed city bill two seventy-five, we took that, that one mile buffer away from City Marchburg, so that we picked up pin lickers, which we didn't have before. They did as good on that, so I actually set it at six hundred thousand for next year.
So that, and that's an interesting thought, because we talked a little about, um, the ones that sales tax and all the incentive and annexation, this is another part that we've alluded to, incentive and annexation.
Does the, uh, local distilleries dictate the same tax rate?
Yeah.
Local distillers, um, depends on, they, they have to. So that's really crazy, man, you, even if they sell out of their own place, they have to pay the same tax rate plus an additional rate that goes directly to the liquor stores because they're selling product and the liquor store is not selling their product. Yeah. But that's the general, that part of it is probably an old. Because they say that's gotta, you gotta make them whole because you're, 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 you're selling in their district that they're licensed in. That part of, that part of that turn probably is back to the state's, those licenses. Big, when the, all, all the bills, all the alcohol stuff changed, um, went in, well, there's some stuff working on now, but when it changed last year, the whole thing that held it up, it would, it would have went through, no problem, the whole thing held it up was these big drinks because, because they're selling in grocery stores and regulated, and so they fought back and forth about these pre-canned drinks that, uh, that are allowed to sell, um, that's what held it up and almost killed the whole thing. Mark for six hundred. That's another one I could, you know, we talked about the, Katie talked about the court cases going up and stuff because what the legal use, when you collect. I didn't hear anything about that, you know, we're not, I feel. She asked about agency, getting courts lawyer, all that stuff.
She needs to start connecting that.
Uh.
She needs to start connecting that for his neighbor.
Dan, what's your pleasure? Thought I already said yes. Six hundred?
Six hundred.
Um, CBB or hotel motel, the CBB's requested three fifty, Parks and Rec's requested three fifty, it just passed through, so I just kept it in seven hundred.
But this year it'll come to over.
This year it'll be over eight.
Right.
So what do we do with that extra?
So again.
The CBB.
Parks and Rec gets it too, yeah, what we'll do is, as, as we see that, um, we'll make state budget revision, um, because if we don't, if we distribute, once we meet that threshold of what's budgeted, if we continue to pay it out, it actually will show a deficit for the CBB and Parks and Rec, so we have to make state budget revision to reflect the actual amount collected.
Okay.
Um, so we'll do that in. Uh, payment in lieu of taxes, two thousand twenty-one, we budgeted five hundred, we collected eight forty-seven, nine thirty-nine. Current year, we budgeted five fifty, and this is typically paid in two halves. We collected three seventy-nine, three eighty-one, or sixty-nine percent today, I bumped it up to six hundred thousand.
That's. Yeah, because the bases pays, they're paying a million dollars for their product now. And then we get a hundred eighty thousand.
Correct. I don't have to look bases, I think it's.
Yeah, you know, you did, it won't be the second year.
Second. Let me hear, five year, two year, five year, five million.
Yeah, six hundred.
Alright, state and federal grants, we met this morning, um, Sherry and, and Penny and I, um. The, we, I kept everything at, at eight eighty-one, eighteen, six thirty, six hundred thirty thousand. Right now, our control reports show that we haven't collected any state grants, any state grant money, and then we've only collected sixty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-two in federal grants, but we know that's not right.
How would you say?
That's all down in three eighty-two, which under the old AS four hundred system, we didn't have the luxury of being able to go in and really fine tune that way, it shouldn't be, so. Um, we have a process in place where this is all going to be corrected. But for now, knowing that that number is going to be much higher next year, I just left it at eight eighty-one, eighteen, the federal and six thirty for state.
Make tens.
And that's the, that's actually the numbers that, that, um, that Tracy and Tim gave. So those are the numbers. Eight eighty federal and six thirty, six thirty state.
What's that? Two?
Eighty.
On the record, you're saying eight hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars.
For federal. And six hundred thirty for state.
Good numbers that they're already.
They're already committed, they're already, that's what I said. Um, sheriff's earnings, that's just revenues collected by the sheriff for services rendered. For twenty-one, twenty-two, we budgeted fifty-five, and we collected seventy, seventy thousand five sixteen. For the current year, we budgeted twenty-five, and through the first six months, we collected eighteen thousand sixty dollars or seventy-two point two percent, so I just kept it at twenty-five thousand.
And this doesn't include. concealed weapons?
No, the concealed weapons, but it's in the use, this is gun crime, but that is sole discretion.
Well, if it says sheriff's. That's, that's kind of a false play.
Or research.
Because that's correct.
I was not wrong, sorry. But that doesn't get distributed to the sheriff personally.
No, fifteen thousand here.
That's right.
Check what I say, this league is playing.
It is. Biggest earnings, Alan, you had the definition, you read this?
I'm sure as of the end of January, twenty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars.
I'm gonna say less than one thousand.
It's been over three hundred thousand at times, but he's been, he's been buying and stuff like that out of it. I'm sorry, what was?
That definition for sheriff's earnings, Doug, it's not what the sheriff gets personally paid, the definition for the sheriff's earnings is what?
Um, it's just sheriff's earning, just revenues collected by the sheriff for services rendered, um, process serving.
Kind of like the IT department.
Yeah, process serving, things like that, the sheriff, um, that twen- that twenty-five thousand that goes to the sheriff, that's further down here. Um, fifteen thousand, that's called sheriff's commission.
Right.
That's separate.
So much of per se, by a certain time, it gets that.
That's based on the, the.
So does this come to the, that's one of our general accounts?
The sheriff's earnings, that's back to the general fund.
In house.
Twenty-five thousand, we budgeted, we collected eighteen oh six oh through the first six months. County clerk's earnings, fees, again, fees collected by the county clerk for services rendered copies, um, what else, Gary?
Access to their online.
Yeah, to their online stuff. Uh, budgeted, uh, three sixty-five, last year collected four seventy-six, eight thirty-nine. Budgeted three sixty-five this year through the first six months. Collected three hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and seven dollars. So we're over, we've collected more than budgeted through the first six months, so I'd set it at four hundred thousand.
Four hundred one thousand. I was gonna say four twenty-five. I'd say some of that, uh, doing this work.
She's had a good job. Uh, circuit clerk's earnings, again, fees collected by the circuit clerk for services rendered. For twenty twenty-one, budgeted one twenty-five, collected one forty-four, seven hundred. For the current fiscal year, budgeted one twenty-five, through the first six months, collected a hundred thousand three seventeen or eighty point three percent.
Isn't this the one that we think because of huge amount of money after? That's Dan.
I think you're, you're thinking about fines, fees and court calls.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not this one.
This is just like this mox, this is just fees for copies and drinks.
And that's, and that's done by the state, right? For the state and, and, uh, circuit clerk, I guess.
Yes. Yeah, we have fines, fees and court calls, but we don't get much.
Why do we not drive?
Um, fines, fees and court calls, twenty twenty-one, we budgeted fifty, got forty-two, this year we budgeted forty-five, we collected twenty-five. So, little bit.
I mean, yeah, that's an ideal, uh, ideal situation, uh, being serviced.
Right.
You need to set a minimum wage of hours?
Doug, what do you want, one fifty? Um, fran- uh, rents and concessions. Income derived from rental in county housing property concessions. Um, typically, this has been the lease payment from nine one one and Regent Nine. And we lost Regent Nine. So.
Airport made the deal, they couldn't.
Twenty twenty-one, we budgeted three seven five, collected three sixty-eight, nine nine seven. This year, we budgeted four hundred thousand, we collected three fifty-one, five eighty-one. Um, we lost rent from Regent Nine beginning in August first. So I just left it, I just left it at three fifty, which is what we collect from central dispatch.
I want to increase my.
What are you going to charge central dispatch? Now, the thing I've got, the thing I've got handled, I'm gonna write down. One thing I've got handling in it is don't mind the old process. If we can charge three hundred fifty thousand, it leads to nine one one, which under the PSC we can do. But that house that we just purchased in Inwood, why can't we collect rent from it?
Because it's not a, this is why I was saying, it's not, it's not be a fine pocket when we do it.
What we will. Dan, I think the closing.
It's, we, we said development authority or better yet, the.
Um, franchise fees. Um, franchise fees is what we collect from Comcast for certain rights or privileges of operation within the county boundaries. Um, our previous fifteen-year franchise agreement with Comcast expired on May first of two thousand eighteen, and if you'll remember, that paid five percent of the gross cable TV revenue, which is set by the PSC, that five percent is non-negotiable. And typically would provide one month sum in February. The current fifteen-year franchise fee pays five percent of all gross cable revenue, which includes television, um, internet and telephone, and we now receive that on a quarterly basis. Um, and our average, actual collective has averaged more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in here. In two thousand twenty-one, we budgeted eight hundred and fifty thousand, we collected a million seventeen, a million seventeen thousand two hundred and seventy-eight, and the current fiscal year, we budgeted a million dollars, we've received three quarterly payments totaling seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars or seventy-seven point eight percent.
Three quarterly payments.
That's three quarterly.
That's two.
Correct. So I said it's a million dollars, but as, as Comcast grows, as they connect more houses, so will this franchise fee grow.
Yeah, we're not connecting any house, uh, houses on any, anything with this, it's a forty three or fifty thousand dollar amount.
Right. So I left it at a million dollars, that's a good number.
Have you made, uh, there's good program, but we have to apply and we gotta read it again. According to Michael, uh, we can, they could give them better service than other people.
And Comcast has gone after that part of money. Um, yeah. Cause we did give them a letter of support.
But if you notice, you see glow fibers in town right now, you grab them on King Street or open fiber.
Which I could, I mean, makes it really tough, but at the same time, my question is, you know, what's the, what's the, how does the public service commission work that? If other companies come in, are they entitled or do they have to enter into a franchise agreement with us? Why is it only Comcast?
It's a cable franchise agreement.
It's a cable.
It's a cable franchise agreement. Fiber is not cable. More like a TV. You're just gonna need a next.
Which is all more reason for, which is all more reason for us to endorse Comcast.
Right, and it's just like your iBlackTV, they franchise fees for that. So what you can get over broadband, both, if you will, is streaming direct TV. The franchise.
Who knows another cable fee? She went wrong turn.
Fiber.
Fiber fee.
Cable franchise fee is really what that's called. Back in the day, King was having delivery method to cover it.
Another thing I've.
Yes, sir. But Alan Drake, here's a million dollars, you didn't remember.
I think, well, that's, that's why I said what I said earlier. How many you spend money on works on equity, this is one of the.
Sorry, are you going to give it to a million?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Um, inspection fees, as you know, this is fees charged by our permits and building and plumbing and electrical inspections department. Um, for twenty twenty one, uh, we budgeted eight fifty, collected one million four sixty one seventy eight. For twenty one twenty two, we budgeted eight fifty and we collected to date through six months, um, one million two eleven two oh seven. Again, this is a, this is a product of the economy, it's a product of building. I, I've.
We've always seen that growth continue that path and hasn't stopped.
No. Since.
It's gonna stop over thirty months.
I budgeted a million sixty thousand.
What founder was it, you get a million sixty thousand?
I, I was at a million dollars. I was at a million dollars. And I went back in some of my calculations, one was five thousand higher than I wanted, the other one was five thousand higher than I wanted, and one was fifty thousand higher than I wanted, so I adjusted them down, I thought we're working, I plugged that sixty thousand, so. I plugged it in inspection.
Forget every good thing I've said about you last summer day. I can put it here.
Here, I thought you was just mastermind there. You're, you're just a bell that clanging.
Alright, so.
That's sixty thousand is a blood number, which I figure based on forty two million dollars, what's sixty thousand one hundred and ninety?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry I asked that question.
Yeah, I think one point two.
I, I, I'm, I agree with Crowe, man, but I think that's why we didn't know.
Oh, it's very good, but I think that's still a conservative number, two forty five is too easy. And I think that's a, I think that's a enough conservative number that holds up even with downturn.
We got five. One got too much?
I'll give it.
Take me to one last thing, start picking up all the building.
Well, the, the, the only thing that you gotta consider there is that you're not going to, you're gonna have a lot of time to track it, so. On some industrial or, there isn't too bad related to what.
But it's gonna, but, but, but growth is gonna slow a little bit just because of the, their checks from market, the industry, and so it's gonna slow a little bit, but it's not like, I mean, if, if it slows a little bit, it's kind of more, more less likely to see as much of this around the county, like, you know, Washington County and Franklin County and Jefferson County.
I'm okay with one point two, but I'm, I'm a little hurt from there.
The other thing to keep in mind, and I know the council, you know, want to talk about this, it's been a number of years since we've adjusted our planning and engineering fees.
Well, we talked about it for the last two.
I know, and, and we really do, or leaving money on the table.
Although, I mean, it costs more to build a house than, than building construction than anything else, but.
And something that you may wanna look at.
Yeah, well.
Half past one hundred feet is over the name of the community.
And based on the first list.
Two.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Hundred five.
Engineering fees, Alan's a million sixty.
Fifteen.
One, two and one five, one point three.
One point four.
What? One point three.
You don't have to put that down here already.
You noticed the IRP fees? We've yet to figure these out, how they calculate them. If you remember the IRP fees, which are the interstate registration land fees. It's the revenue generated from a fee assessed by the Department of Motor Vehicles, interstate trucks. It's distributed monthly by the state auditors, county collection. Twenty twenty one, we budgeted forty five, we collected fifty three seven twenty six. For the current year, we budgeted forty five and we collected through the first six months, forty nine thousand three eight.
Oh, that's big.
Monthly. So I left it at forty five.
I think it's the fees, remember truck and trailer drive down the highway. It has to log the miles of traveling in the state. If that truck's registered in another state, it has to report those miles of travel. If it didn't buy any fuel here, then he owes our state highway dues fees.
The number of trucks I dodged on the way home tonight, that number should be, should be.
Four point five million. But we've only got twenty six miles interstate. So the trucks are always on there, so we're, it's a, it's, it's a slow, it's a low, it's a low.
Is it reporting on their honor?
But, well.
No, it's, it's all, I mean, they're all good or two, yeah.
Fifty there.
You said fifty? Jim, you said fifty?
Yeah.
I'll be there, did you say?
All right, fines, fees and court calls, fines, fees and court calls collected for statutory violations. Twenty twenty one, that's just the one Doug you were talking about. We budgeted fifty, we collected forty two thousand nineteen dollars. Twenty one twenty two, we budgeted forty five. Today, through the first six months, we've collected twenty five thousand four hundred and twenty six dollars or fifty six point five percent, so I left it at forty five.
It's like, oh, look. How's that stuff? Forty five. But you think that's the same one you did with the tail drug.
Was there like a five dollar fee added on to you?
Yeah.
That was for team. I had to put in a separate grant money account.
Forty five. So that's something of which we should check into.
Yeah.
I'll keep my number like we did.
I put it on the best.
Put it in the different on the real account.
Yeah.
Little case, this is a safe part.
They'll be in, I guess.
Even double things.
He had a fee on the ticket, that sheriff did that.
They can. There's, that's all legislated.
It is, and you looked at the ticket lately?
Oh, yeah.
Holy moly.
I haven't lately, but I know people have.
Have you seen one? They have a laundry list of stuff in there, we're good.
That's what I said, why can't we? Everybody okay with forty five?
Yeah.
I mean, we're the ones that have given cases, sheriff.
I ain't do that. Jail fees, this is the state reimbursement that we receive from the state once a year.
Is this about inmates or?
Well.
They're paying for their inmates?
In two thousand five.
That was a big investment pass, right?
The legislation, um, passed. Yeah.
Right.
That was the credit. Now, this is separate from that.
I'm looking at you like, I'm looking at the other one, I'm sorry, the sheriff's.
In two thousand five, the West Virginia legislation created the regional jail operations partial reimbursement fund. They deposit revenues into the fund, which is composed of fees collected by the magistrate and circuit courts. The state treasurer's office then disperses the funds annually in July as a lump sum payment to counties and cities that participate in the regional jail system. For July first, twenty three twenty one, total throughout the state, there were eight hundred and thirty thousand four hundred and sixty seven inmate days. And the funds had two million four hundred and ninety three thousand three hundred and fifty six dollars and seventy one cents. Berkeley County had second highest inmate days of anybody in the, in the state, second only to Kenal County. Um, we had fifty two thousand six hundred and ninety one inmate days, Kenal County had sixty one thousand four hundred and ninety six inmate days. So, that fifty two thousand six ninety one of the total eight thirty four sixty seven represented six point three four five percent of the total. So they simply took the two million four ninety three three fifty six that was in the fund, I'm six point three four four percent. So that our, um, disbursement in July was a hundred and fifty eight thousand one hundred and ninety seven dollar thing cents. As we've discussed in the past, our inmate days over the past five years have actually declined. Um.
That's, that's true.
But our allocation has gone up because everywhere else inmate population has increased. And the current, the past year is the first year that statewide that number has actually gone down.
Back to the last two years, that was probably three days ago.
So in sixteen seventeen, our total inmate days was seventy four thousand seven eighty one. In seventeen eighteen, that dropped down to sixty nine thousand five twenty seven. In eighteen nineteen, it dropped down to sixty six thousand three ninety eight. Nineteen twenty, it dropped down to fifty five thousand one eighty six. And then in twenty twenty one, it actually increased to fifty two six ninety one. However, um, the rest of the state has increased. So we budgeted one eighty five for the current year, and we collected one sixty eight four six, that was last year. Twenty twenty one, we budgeted one eighty five, we collected one sixty nine four sixteen. For the current fiscal year, we budgeted one sixty. And our lump sum payment in July was a hundred and fifty eight thousand one ninety seven.
Yeah, we won't get any more.
So, we're seeing our regional bill go up, no, we won't get any more this year. We're seeing our regional bill go up, which I assume is a product of more inmate days. Yep. So you would think that our allocation for the current fiscal year, which we'll get next July, will actually go up a little bit.
Not everybody else.
Depends what the rest of the state does. So that's a long way of saying I decided to keep it at a hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay. But looking at place, put down a sixty thousand.
Oh, that's fun, that's really nice. Everybody okay with that?
I need you to, I get everybody with the print.
Interest on accounts, we're, we've gotta look at interest, something's, something's, something's blocking our interest.
You have things?
What, what, we got, we're going.
A lot of cash in bank.
Yeah, that's crazy.
For twenty twenty one, we budgeted fifty, we collected seventy nine thousand. For the current year, we budgeted fifty and we only collected eight thousand one hundred and forty seven dollars. So. We're, we're gonna look at that, so I left it at fifty thousand, it's not a lot, but.
Um, Nick, well, keep in mind, the next, our bank is going to drop a bit.
This year.
It's probably gonna be stretched out because the bank has stopped.
I know. Oh, yeah, we got a lot of money.
Well, it's good for us, back to them, but our company's gonna be stupid, why?
Right.
You gonna give the fifty?
Sheriff's commission, that's just that pass through, it's always fifteen thousand.
And President's not in on it.
No.
Well, I know the cash flows there, but the rate is down.
Right.
In this, the rate was almost a hundred and some kind of.
I was gonna say it's double what they originally all right showed up in.
Right, so. And this is all homework, that's right.
It's not all of you.
Nah, this, actually, this is, nah, not all we're interested in, this is just general fund.
I'm a teenager, uh, I'm a kid. When does it go out?
It'll be, it'll be July first, technically.
It will, it'll force it out real soon.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, Tony Grant.
All right, gaming.
Next year, your issue.
Sheriff, that's fifteen across the board, that never changes. No, that fifteen thousand for the sheriff never change.
So, unless they, unless the Sheriff's Association gets the legislature to change it, because they want it changed.
All right, gaming and video lottery. Gaming and video lottery. Gaming is the state allocation of gaming access to the counties. In twenty twenty one, we budgeted thirty five, we collected eighty eight five seventy one. In twenty one twenty two, we budgeted thirty five. Through the first six months, we, we collected fourteen nine sixty five, and then we collected a little bit more in January, so at the end of January, we're at eighteen thousand, um, four twelve forty two, fifty three point seven percent. We get our biggest gaming and video lottery bump. And, and it's a quarterly payment, we get it for the, the month of February, March and April. You know why? Every, everybody's hit their tax refund, and they gamble their tax refund, by the way.
Well, they're getting more satisfaction out of that.
So we'll make budget, and we'll get that, we'll get that big bump. I left it at thirty five, video lottery, um, I'm sorry, is everybody okay with thirty five?
Wait, you have yesterday, if you're right on that.
Um, video lottery, we, um, twenty one, twenty twenty one, we budgeted two seventy five, we collected four sixteen seven thirty eight. Twenty one twenty two, we budgeted three twenty five, and through the first seven months, with the, the most recent bump, we're at two twenty nine, three twenty three and seventy five cents or seventy point six percent, I left it at three. I left it at three. Three hundred. Last year, again. We were at two seventy-five, last year we collected at the end from the total of the year, four sixteen, seven thirty-eight. We're at three twenty-five this year, and through seven months, we've collected two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Um, planning commission revenues, again, revenues generated by our planning commission, um, again, product of the, of the economy and the housing market. Twenty twenty-one, budgeted one fifty-five, we collected four sixteen, seven nine. For twenty-one, twenty-two, we budgeted one seventy-seven, and through six months, we collected one sixty-seven, oh fifty-three, or ninety-four point four percent. I bumped that up to two hundred.
It'll be higher than I'll go to. The issue is from next year.
Two.
Charges to other entities, this is the other area that Sherry and I and Penny are gonna clean up. Um, this will be where the charges for gearing will show up. Um, right now, it all shows up, it's all bucketed in together under three eighty-two, which is refunds and reimbursements. So...
We're gonna charge Gary, or what he charged, well, what he, yeah.
Well, no, this, this one, it does have to be three, you know, because he's all the same, he isn't like he's grown, and we got to go more.
So, we know how to fix it, don't we?
Yes.
We're gonna fix it.
Wrong answer.
I know. What are you talking about? We never discussed this. Um, twenty twenty-one, we budgeted seventy-five, we collected one eighty-four, one eighty-six. Current year, we budgeted seventy-five, collected fifty-two, five twenty, according to control reports, at seventy percent. I kept it at seventy-five, we'll, we can change that through state budget revision, once we have it all figured out, so...
Well, I can tell you that that number wasn't bad, came up, probably a hundred fifty.
Did you drop six hundred?
Oh, I was gonna say, I was, I was thinking, yeah, I'll eat it.
We were six hundred this year.
So...
For six months or the last year?
Year. So we'll, we'll fix that through state budget revision, but for now...
I don't wanna purpose that.
No, 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 because you had some big accounts last year, you had Tyreport, you had, um, you had, uh, City Martinburg.
I had to build, City Martinburg, that project not done, and we got Station Sixty that we're starting right now, so it's, it's another, I think, water.
The Water District.
Water District. Three twenty-five? Look at that, it's right now, it's elsewhere, right now, it's not figuring out a count.
Yeah, I just leave it at, my recommendation is leave it at seventy-five, and then we'll leave the next one at a million, and then we'll adjust those two based on how we base it.
Highlight, and then we know, we know that they're gonna be adjusted, and it'd be nice to have act of company.
Okay.
Especially seventy-five, six hundred.
And then that's seventy-five thousand as magistrate or reimbursement. Nice and hot. So there you are. Now, the consensus, as you can see, is forty-four million, three twenty-eight, one one eight. You, if you funded every request that came in with no changes, and that's no additional personnel cost, you're at forty-five, one oh two.
We're always, we're always sort of, well, that's probably, we're probably closer.
You're closer this year than you've ever been. I hope somebody does what we need to hear. Now, that does not include, that forty-five, one oh two, nine forty-two is assuming that you fund all the operating expenses as presented, which we know is not going to be needed. Um, it does not include any of new positions that were requested, the three new cops, uh, um, the new, and, and I'll break those out for each separate.
I kinda like the idea of him for his position to create.
And that worked out well this year, we break them to track them.
I've only got two lines about that.
Two line?
So they're special.
Where at then?
They're special.
Should say, because I copied you.
I was gonna say. Now, just to show you how close you are, though, you're at forty-five, one oh two, nine forty-two includes, that's every, that includes the airport.
How does Barnhart get one, one, four million dollars? Where, where do you get crazy at?
There, there's a five hundred thousand right there.
I'm gonna recommend that he fund the airport out of coal severance this year, like we did, next year, like we did this year. So coal severance will completely fund the airport. So that'll be a swing of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which will come off in general funds, very, we love that. So you're within half a million dollars, we, we draw the airport off, we're within a half a million dollars, we're in balance right now, without any adjustments.
We're demanding, we're comparing you to G and G.
Just to make sure you're one thousand, put it in there.
I get it, here's, here's five.
I'm three hundred thousand above you all.
All day, right, five, five million is, there, there's a million right there.
Are you happy? You want me to?
No, I'm happy. I'm sure it must have a really good morning.
Now...
A mortar, a critter.
Including the airport and excluding hotel motel, so we're gonna take that both forward, and that's the other thing.
Library or airport?
Airport. Yeah, the airport, I'm gonna recommend that you fund out of coal severance. So that'll come off, that'll come off of your, your budget allocation, and if you go through your, your expenditures, you'll see what I'm talking about.
Close the last pile on, on that bridge too.
Pardon me?
Close the building, that last pile on, on that bridge, like we did.
Ah, damn. Um, if you take the, the two hundred and seventy-five thousand out from the airport, you've got about two million dollars of outside agency requests, and that does include the library, which is eight, eight hundred, eight oh seven, that's before we crank in our new items. Some of you have indicated, um, a desire to do a little extra, or something, big outside agencies this year. For example, we've got supplemental requests from senior services, the technical election, the, um, EPPAs indicated that they could be, they might as well. What I would recommend to you, instead of moving, is go in, go one, and fund the requests as they come through. And let's get this, let's get this behind us. And then, if the council decides you wanna take a million or a million five of the American Rescue Act money, let's move that out. And between now and July first, put together the committee, or put together a, a mechanism in place, whereas you can use some of that American Rescue money to provide a one-time check, one-time payment to these agencies, um, outside of the, outside of the budget. Um, certainly can use that American Rescue Act money for that. Um, and the other thing it does, it doesn't tie, it doesn't, you know, if, if, for example, if, um, senior services ask for seventy, and they end up getting one fifty. Next year, if you go back to seventy, they're gonna say, oh, you gave me one fifty last year, are you having a budget? Well, no, we're not. This one, you could say, this was a separate, one-time, non-recurring payment, just like out of the debt.
It's, it ends with that, you do that separately.
Yeah, like that. Yep, and we can do it before July first, we can do it in this current fiscal year. Or a public. Probably, I could have Tracy on that week. We might give her a word, too. Yeah, I, I would, I would say yes, but let me have Tracy, because Tracy can contact for federal.
No, no, I think, I hope so. Budget after.
No, I was gonna say, no, we could probably allocate that. I know we could use it for the airship.
That's, yeah.
So, if we could earmark that as a payment to the airship, we can use it for that. So, we'll step through the budget, just like we normally would. And then, after we have this budget set, then we'll supplement the allocation. You okay with that, Nick?
Yeah, but to the, uh, I went to the, uh, uh, appreciation dinner over at, uh, at the Patrick Baller, and, and as our, you know, they're thinking, right, you know, they're, they're planning now to come up with bunkers back there, trying to figure out how to get bunkers on there right now, so that, uh, um, if the ambulance store already says, yeah, they want to put people back there, that they're ready.
Doug, you can recess any time.
Well, I wanna talk to Doug, I mean, it's a great client.
If you wanna continue to talk about revenue, you can, or budget, you should stay in open session, but if you think the dialogue and discussion is done, it's a, it's a very risky thing.
Yeah. Yeah. Bring it on to me, I, I think we all agree that we wanna help out people with some more. We got a few, I have, I have a decent, so, I mean, there's some coming in.
I got a couple, not, not a lot, but we heard some things during the, um, budget presentations that they may not have codified, they didn't incorporate in the form of the document, but EPPA has indicated that we use a little bit more. Um, I think some of you have indicated that maybe mills on wheels and CCAT might wanna do a little bit more, or...
It is really the alternative violence.
Any alternatives for violence.
You know, it's all of the costs.
And Paul had a big ass mission. You weren't here, but they had a big ass mission, they, everybody's request was, was big, and it's all from our feet.
Right, but I think they also, you know, they also had, uh, also revenue too, but forty-five thousand also revenue, it wasn't a lot.
They had, they want them to, them to let go.
But, you're in the position this year of, that you can do a little bit, if we, as long as we also...
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Davis, when we get to expenditures, can we not make a column for a designated amount that we have to read to, that we put in that for that this coming year?
Well, my suggestion was...
And you need to answer to the state, but anyway.
Well, my suggestion was that we not, that the first half of our rescue, rescue plan allocation has been
accounted for.
Accounted for, committed, so they'll, but we're gonna be getting the second allocation in June. If, if you wanna do that, make sure that it's, that any, any allocation that you make is separate from the budget. That, that, what I'm recommending...
So you don't want it to be, so to appear like it's gonna be re-impered, and screw up our budget.
Right, what I'm recommending is that you want inside the budget, the way you normally would.
I'd be happy with that same, to, to still.
And then...
What I'm just saying is that you're gonna have some string out for a while, you know, they're not all gonna be ready, and want to be ready. So you're gonna string out for a year, probably.
My recommendation was, would be that any additional allocation above and beyond those requests, we'll be making.
This year, according to, we got the four, ten, ten, thirty.
Yep. It'll be a one sum, one time, one sum payment. It will not show up, as I said, it will not show up in this next year's budget.
Right. But that could be, we could even put that, we could even put that in a, in a special expense account, line, and not have, have money.
I just, I, you know, I hate to co-mingle general fund money.
So you can, can, can we say?
Yeah. What do you think, Sherry? You agree? There you go.
I think you have it, yeah, for some reason. Alright, um, as we say, we had a long pump, but we did a lot of those pretty.
And you landed, what did I tell you this morning, forty-four million?
Yes, I actually was just laughing about that when they, when the total came up. Yeah, well, we were talking about what you had.
I said, when, when they get down, they're gonna land at around forty-four million.
Alright, um...
That's a good budget. And we can defend those numbers.
I think I have a feeling.
Alright, Mr. Barnhart, if you did honor.
Mr. President, I made a reset.
We are recessed.